Yeah, he's next door. According to calling the meeting on fiscal affairs for order, I look for my agenda, but I think I know it, the first order of business is minutes from the last meeting. So move. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
I'd love to see one.
Bear with me one second. Hmm? Hold on a second. Where are my eyes? Sorry. Warm television. Okay. We have four resolutions. I'll do each one individually. Resolution, action item B, is the resolution authorize Hunter College implement an increase in dormitory fees beginning in fall of 2010. Dormitory fees will increase thirty-three percent by way of a two-step increase and thereafter based on regular index annual increase. Fees will rise sixteen point five percent in the fall of 2010, an additional sixteen point five percent to be effective spring of 2011. The current dormitory fees range from three hundred and forty-eight dollars to six hundred and twenty-seven dollars per month for a nine-month school year and will be increased to four hundred and sixty-two dollars per month to two hundred and eighty, uh, two hundred, excuse me, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars per month by the spring of 2011 for the nine month school year, depending on the type of resident room. The base increase will also proportionally affect the dormitory fees for summer months beginning in summer 2011. In fall 2011, Hunter College will begin raising dormitory fees incrementally by an amount equal to the average of the trailing five-year H E P I inflation rates. The fee increase is needed to maintain the condition of the dormitory complex and the implementation of annual rate increases will ensure that the dormitory funding will be maintained at adequate levels. Resolution on table, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? We have President of Hunter College.
I appreciate the committee taking, reviewing this proposal. We do want to make, make sure that we can maintain the dorms in a satisfactory condition and we are really, have been running at a deficit through the last few years and this is very important. We met with a number of student groups and they understand the need for the increase and have been supportive.
Uh, question.
Yes.
Would the current increase, would that, um, would that mean we won't run a deficit this year or for next year?
Um, it, it may take about a year to, to catch up, but we will, at, we will be whole within the increases are totally implemented because the increase is set up to be implemented the first stage in this fall and the next stage the next fall. So by the time the full increase is implemented, we will be, we should be running at parity.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item C is a resolution authorize the general counsel of the university to execute a license agreement for online access to electronic journals from Wiley subscription services on behalf of the university. The contract shall be awarded to a sole source, a sole source pursuant to university regulations and applicable law. Total amount of the five-year license agreement is approximately four point eight million dollars payable in five installments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item D, a resolution authorize the general counsel of the university to execute a license agreement for online access to Science Direct electronic collection of full tech science, technology, medicine, and social sciences journals from Elsevier BV on behalf of the university. The contract shall be awarded as a sole source pursuant to university regulations and applicable law. Total amount of the five-year license is approximately eight point three million dollars payable in five annual installments. Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And action item E, a resolution authorize the general counsel of the university to execute an amendment to agreement number N zero zero one zero zero five with ACT Inc. on behalf of the university to provide funding for the agreement ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and ten. The funding shall not exceed a total estimated cost of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. ACT provides testing services to the City University to support high-volume assessments in excess of a hundred thousand test administrations each year of student college readiness in areas of reading, writing, and math. Tests are used for both initial placement, for college credit or remedial courses, and for exit from remedial program. The amendment adds funds for fiscal year two thousand and nine, ten, for services to be rendered. I have to have a motion? So move. Any questions, comments?
What's the amount of the increase?
The, um, the seven twenty-five is the total estimate cost for the, to cover the cost of the entire fiscal year. So this is the need to cover, you know, the entire cost in two thousand and ten.
But we're amending a contract, so I assume there's some costs now. What's the incremental cost from what we have now to what we're going to?
The incremental cost, I think the value of the entire, we've been, I think the, the contract was a five-year contract, um, and I believe it was two, it was a little over two million dollars, two point one. So the, we've been drawing down on that contract for the last five years. It's been a five-year contract. Those funds have been exhausted, so now we need to cover the last year, which is this year, and that's seven twenty-five, which is, um, which is the cost for the entire year. The contract then will expire, we're, we're going to be putting out an RFP for the next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for the reports and a report from Vice, Associate Vice Chancellor Matt Sapienza. Matt, an update on the budget.
Thank you Chair Loda. Hello, everyone. Your afternoon. I'm sure as you all have realized, April first has come and gone and we don't have a, an agreement on the state budget yet, but there were some, um, there were some somewhat encouraging news over the last several weeks or certainly since the last time we've met, and that is that the Senate and Assembly have both put forth their proposals for the fiscal eleven budget. And just to give you a, a brief, you know, synopsis of what happened on the executive side, the governor had proposed reductions to our senior colleges of eighty-four point four million dollars and to our community colleges, a base aid reduction of two hundred and eighty-five dollars per F T E, which would have resulted in a loss to our community colleges of twenty-two million dollars. The Senate and the Assembly proposal, the Senate's proposal was a resolution, the Assembly actually voted and approved a budget bill. Both the Senate and the Assembly proposals restored the entire community college base aid reduction, which was terrific news. However, the Senate's proposal called for an additional cut to the senior colleges of about twenty-two million dollars. So essentially, the Senate was buying back the community college cut with additional senior college reductions, which would have put the senior college total reduction at a hundred and six million instead of eighty-four million, as the governor had proposed. Our side, we have more. The senior college. We have had several discussions with Senate Finance and with the Senate leadership over the last several weeks, and we've, we are encouraged and do feel positive that the Senate and the, is coming around to the, to putting forth a, a proposal that will more mirror the Assembly's. And so we, we are encouraged that in the final agreement, when the budget, whenever the budget is adopted, that, um, that the community college cut will be fully restored and there will not be any additional cuts to the senior colleges. However, we are still looking at an eighty-four million dollar reduction for the senior colleges, which comes on top of a hundred and twenty-one million that we've taken over the last two years. And so we certainly have concerns about the level of that cut, but we're hopeful that there won't be any additional to the senior colleges and that the community college cut will be fully restored. So that'll, that would be a tremendous thing for our community colleges. As you all know, also, the governor had put forth a, a higher education empowerment initiative, which basically called for SUNY and CUNY to have greater flexibility in terms of setting tuition, in terms of procurement. And the Assembly took no action on the governor's proposal for higher education empowerment. The Assembly publicly stated that this is something that should be taken up outside of the budget process and shouldn't be part of the budget negotiations between the three houses. The Senate did some tweaks to the, to the governor's proposal. The governor had called for SUNY and CUNY board of trustees to have the ability to increase tuition by two and a half times the higher education price index. The Senate's resolution lowered that to one and a half times the, the index. The governor's proposal also called for CUNY and SUNY to have a post-audit process on procurement, similar to what we have with, with the city of New York. The Senate called for that to be only on the procurement of goods and not on the procurement of services. So there were some, some changes that the Senate had proposed to the governor's proposal. The governor had also proposed that tuition revenue be placed off-budget and not be part of the state appropriations for, for SUNY and CUNY, and the Senate rejected that idea in their resolution. So again, the encouraging thing is that Senate and Assembly both do have proposals that, which they can negotiate over. They came back in session today. They had been out of session for the last ten days or so for the, for the passover and Easter holidays, and so there are discussions that are ongoing that, you know, we've been involved with both Senate and Assembly leadership. And so we're hopeful that there will be an agreement sometime soon and that we could begin planning for, for our next fiscal year. On the city side, when was the last time we met, the mayor has proposed additional cuts to city agencies. The cut was seven point two percent for all agencies, except for uniform agencies and the Department of Ed, which had lower reductions, but seven point two percent for us meant thirteen point nine million dollars for fiscal year eleven. And this comes on top of cuts that were proposed earlier in the year, which totaled fifteen point four million for fiscal eleven. So we're looking at about twenty-nine million in new reductions to the community colleges for fiscal eleven. And this, the city had put forth these reductions as a result of the uncertainty with the state budget, and the city is looking at a potential loss of over one point three billion dollars in state revenues per the, the state executive budget. And so this additional thirteen point nine million is a proposal at this point that the city asked for as part of the mayor's executive budget process. The proposals would due back to the city budget director today. We submitted them earlier today, and the mayor is due to, announces executive budget in the first week of May, and so we'll have a better sense then of, of what, what it looks like in terms of our overall reductions. And we do have some protection on the city side from our maintenance of effort law, and so that'll help us. But again, we're looking at some steep cuts on the community college side from, from the, from the city. And again, we'll, should know, come the first week of May, what, where our executive budget from the city looks like. Any questions on city or state budget updates? Chris Martel.
As I read it, the best we're going to do is an eighty-four million dollar cut of the senior colleges.
Mm-hmm.
That is about a twenty-one. Right.
Labor reduction, I think, at least as of attention.
I'm wondering if, in light of the fact that most of us think two thousand and twelve is going to be worse than two thousand and eleven, did fiscal affairs be looking at, at any budgetary issues that, you know, that might be impacted by the fiscal situation we're in? I mean, should we be slowing down investments even in laudable projects? Should we be defining what's core and what's not core to try to at least, you know, maintain what we have so when as and if this fiscal crisis dissipates, we will be still strong and, and representing what we want CUNY to be? I mean, is there any advice that you would, you would provide us in this, in this area?
Chris Martel, if I could ask Vice Chancellor Dobbin, because there are these ongoing committees that talk about.
The answer is, everybody to be aware that, you know, we were, I mean, we had, you know, some ability over the last couple of years to get through this campaign, but at the same time, because organizations, while we, you know, had some reductions. Long run, the chance rate is just very, ready for this very day here. Number of things there. Buy it in three buckets. Add the things that extend possible, which is a lot of time. Then have a second budget. Here's things that, you know, we do, had to do them, we certainly want to do them. Baby ate them, do them. Some good things. Then we're looking at each. There is an example just to make. Then taking all of those. All of that information. Forward, we're looking at us. There's things that forward to look to change. Take care of the half of the issue.
Thank you. As we proceed down this difficult stretch of time, if, if we could get that information out in a more general way and deal with some of the issues that, that fall in the general category of transparency of, I think would help everyone understand that we're, we're not, we're acting, we're not reacting.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm.
I think we have a lot.
I know, I mean, the chancellor, the chancellor has made this, these points at, at meetings I've been at, but you know what's going to happen as, as some of these cuts start to really bite, the more information about the things we're doing to ameliorate the impact, I think the better the morale will be.
Anytime you can eliminate fear, you can control the situation much better. I agree. I agree. I had actually, but based on your question, which is why I wanted Alan to respond to it, is I've known this is going on, but I, the transparency may not be available there because I know there are faculty, it's both trustees, faculties, chancellery staff, there are, it's a, it's a broad group looking at these issues because, I mean, it's been, you know, the chancellor wants to be ahead of the curve on this. It's important for him to be.
But on the other hand, we don't want to scare. Generally choosing. Thirty twenty-five percent.
Chair Loda, if I could just add one other item on the state budget side. The governor had proposed a seventy-five dollar reduction to all TAP awards, and the Senate and the Assembly re, both rejected that proposal, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that because that was an important thing that we were lobbying for to, to get restored. So we're looking positive on that aspect.
The other piece that was sent, that alarmed me, it's not an issue for this year, it's probably not an issue for next year, but they put in a piece that said the universities should in the future be funding their own TAP. So again, that's something that we're going to work very hard. We got some time on that to not have that be the case.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. Matt? Okay. All right. Now, we've been given a report in our packages from Janet Krone on investments. Janet, Chief Investment Officer, you have a report?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to provide a brief update to the memo, which I'm sure you've all looked at, and that is to give you an estimate that for the first quarter, the portfolio actually did quite well in March, so we're up three point two percent, and that would bring the market value to about a hundred and fifty million, and that's net of about four million in withdrawals in this period. Also, on March twenty-fourth, the Subcommittee on Investments met and approved a new allocation to, not a new allocation, but a revised allocation to hedge funds in the amount of ten percent. We'd also like to report that the ranges will be five to fifteen percent on hedge funds, and the benchmark that we intend to use is the Hedge Fund Research, Inc., Fund to Funds Universe Benchmark, which is comprised of about two thousand underlying fund to funds. On the private equity, the Subcommittee approved a target allocation of five percent, and when we get to the point where we invest in that asset class, we, we would address ranges at that time. On the real assets, there were no changes in the, the target. We would just, would like to report that going forward, we would like to utilize the Wellington Customized Benchmark solely, as opposed to both the Wellington Customized Benchmark and the CBI plus five percent. The reason being that the custom benchmark is designed to reflect the weighted average of the underlying holdings of the portfolio, so it better tracks the portfolio, whereas the CPI plus five percent is a reasonable goal over the long term, but you'll see some significant differences between the portfolio and, and that benchmark. So we're, we're going to just, now that we've been in the, the program for a while, we think that it's time to just shift to the Wellington Custom Benchmark. On the fixed income, as you know, we had talked about indexing the better part of that portfolio, and that process was hastened by the departure of the Torbahn team at Oppenheimer last week. As a result, Cambridge recommended that we disinvest. We have since hired a portfolio transition manager and, and will be transitioning the portfolio to the State Street Global Advisors. It's a government credit index fund at about six basis points, and that index is about a five-year duration and it excludes any mortgage-backed securities exposure, where we're a bit reluctant at this point, given the plan at least for the government to withdraw support from that area. So with that, that completes my comments. Does anybody have any questions?
I have none. Anybody? Okay. Inside of our package also, for those members of the Subcommittee on Investments, there's a write-up on the resolutions that we passed at our last meeting as well. Now, report, item C, on the internal control reports and a report by our auditor of KPMG.
Thank you Chair Loda. I want to introduce some of the, some of our guests here. To my left is Shelley Massey, who's the partner in charge of the audit from KPMG, and to Shelley's left is Aaron Shembeck, who is the senior manager, and to my right is Tom Zhao, who is the assistant controller and the responsibility for financial reporting. What Shelley and Aaron are going to report is, in essence, a continuation of a report that we had at the last meeting. At the last meeting, KPMG reported on the, on the financial statements and the results of that audit. As part of that engagement, KPMG also does an audit of the A one thirty-three. This is an audit of the various Title IV programs, the federal Title IV programs that the university administers, and those funds tend to be dispersed through my office. In addition, we also asked KPMG to do an internal control report, that is, to look at eight or nine colleges on a rotating basis and to examine the controls that they have in place in a number of financial areas. So with that as a, as an introduction, let me ask Shelley to present the report.
Thanks Barry. As part of the materials, you had received the internal control report that was addressed to Barry's attention, as well as the A one thirty-three report, and then there was a PowerPoint presentation that was passed out today, and I'll begin by going through the PowerPoint presentation. And there are two items on the agenda today. The first is to review the management letters. There are two. There is one that is addressed to the audit Subcommittee, and it includes the comment that we had communicated to the audit Subcommittee back when we met previously to review the financial statements, and that included one comment that was considered to be a significant deficiency and related to the reporting of component units within CUNY's financial statements. And to go back and, and review this comment, there were two component units, the Economic Development Corporation and the Q student residences, that had not previously been recorded in CUNY's consolidated financial statements that should have been, and the impact was immaterial, and the adjustment of seven million dollars was included in the two thousand and nine financial statement. So the equity from previous years was recorded through the two thousand and nine activities. The other management letter that we provided to you is the comments from each of the colleges that we have looked at in terms of internal controls during our audit process. And the second item on the agenda is the A one thirty-three report, which is the report on the university's federal. The beginning of the management letters, as Barry mentioned, each year we visit eight or nine colleges, as was this case, and we perform certain internal control procedures in the areas of salaries, procurement, tuition billing, and cash collections, and we ensure that the controls that they have in place are designed properly and operating effectively. And the colleges that we visited during two thousand and nine are included here on page three. While these colleges are visited and current year comments are, are reviewed with the colleges, we do look at previous comments from the past audits to ensure that the recommendations are being addressed, and those are included in the management letter as well. On page four, I've spoken about this, these are the areas that we focus on in terms of the internal controls that we look at, at the colleges that we visit. On page five, these are the items that we have addressed in the management letter that specifically relate to the office of the university controller. There were five items. The first is with respect to information provided by DASNY and DDCM. As part of the audit, there are numerous schedules that we receive from DASNY and DDCM, and we are recommending that management perform a thorough review and analysis of these schedules. We did find some errors within the schedules as they were provided by DASNY and DDCM. Nothing material, but things that we had noticed that if management would perform a thorough analysis, they may have caught prior to providing to us. The second item is with respect to compensated absences, and something that we identified this year, we noticed that colleges are inconsistent in how they determine their accrual for compensated absences. Some colleges use information that's available to them at the end of May, some use information that's available to them at the end of June. Again, it does not provide, uh, provide any significant differences in what the accrual would be, it's just an inconsistency is how the colleges are doing it. So we have recommended that management work with. So we have recommended that management work with the colleges to have them all perform this analysis at the same time of the year. And with respect to the last three, student status changes, verification, and financial aid refunds, these are three compliance requirements for the A-133 audit. There were findings in these areas, and we are recommending that management enhance the internal controls over these areas to reduce findings in the future. On page six, these are the areas of findings and recommendations that we have for each of the college activities, and some of these, just to provide some examples of some of the comments that are included in the management letter within these areas. Property management is an area that we look at, and we did have some comments on notifying property managers before inventory items are moved, and ensuring that college personnel follow tagging policies of the fixed assets. With respect to procurement, we look at segregation of duties, and we did have a few comments around segregation of duties when approving purchase orders. For tuition management and cash management, we noticed some journal entries that were not being properly reviewed and approved prior to entering a system. For human resources management, some of the comments that we had related to the proper removal of employees from the payroll system upon termination and the timely removal of those employees. And with respect to information technology, we noticed that some colleges do not have formal disaster recovery plans. That's been a comment that we've identified in the past, as well as the system backups not being stored offsite. So that concludes the management letter section of the presentation.
A quick question.
Go ahead.
On the removing of terminated or employees who have ceased to be employed, is that a ministerial act in which they're still showed on the record, or are there actually issues of people getting paid?
It's more of a timing issue of them coming off as they were removed from the payroll and not like a month later. They weren't not being paid, it was just a timing issue. So where they still had, they were still on the payroll system, but should have been removed as of the effective date of their termination.
Okay. That was my question as well. The question, Alan, is the implementation of PeopleSoft, the ongoing CRM, will address many of these issues, if I recall.
And that is the response to, when we ask for management response, that's actually the response to many of these comments, that when PeopleSoft comes in, the policies.
The HR system is probably the oldest and most broken role administrator.
That'll also go back to the compensated absences and accruals as well. That'll help us from the prior page.
The university is putting out an RFP for a, has put out an RFP for a university-wide timing leave system, and that's one of the, the implementation of that system will help with the compensated absence as well.
Question?
Yes, sir. The, what's the dollar level of materiality, and how did you determine it?
Well, the, I don't know the dollar level of the materiality off the top of my head, but it is determined based on the total assets of the organization at the consolidated level, so we do not audit down the materiality level of each of the individual colleges. So it's determined at the consolidated level.
But we know $7 million is not material.
Yes, that's correct.
But we don't, but what would, 14, is it, is it near? I mean, what's the cutoff? You don't, more or less, rough idea?
I honestly, I mean, don't have that number.
I do recall at the last audit committee meeting, we discussed the $7 million issue and the question that was not material. In looking at the, at the documents more closely, I noticed that one of the, the component units that we didn't pick up issued some bonds. What was the dollar value of the bonds they issued?
That was 70.
70 million?
Yeah.
And the 70 million was not material in the statement of the lawsuit?
That was not material in terms of the balance sheet, which is looked at as a gross up between assets and liabilities. That definitely would have been material if it had been captured through the statement of changes. So materiality is generally looked at on what would change or change your net assets when we look at audit differences. So that was a little different because it only affected the balance sheet.
I would assert that those are kinds of issues that the audit committee should be well and truly comfortable with and aware of, including the methodology for determining it.
At the end, we should talk about what we need to do going forward.
Okay. All right, moving on to the A-133 audit, that audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, as well as standards that are applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. The compliance aspect of this audit is conducted in accordance with the federal OMB circular A-133, and that circular requires us to consider 14 different compliance requirements and audit the compliance of that requirement, as well as ensuring that the university has appropriate internal controls surrounding the compliance requirement to ensure that they do maintain compliance. Out of those 14 compliance requirements that we're required to look at, we do look at the applicability, so some are not applicable to students' financial assistance, and then some are not considered to be essential material. So ultimately, we are looking at seven different compliance requirements. One of the compliance requirements, requirements is considered to be special tests, and there are numerous special tests that we are responsible for auditing, and all of that is included on page eight, and then our findings are included on page nine, and I'm going to have Aaron walk through the requirements and the findings.
So if you turn to slide eight, as Shelley mentioned, the compliance requirements that are, that are needed to be tested, we performed both compliance and internal control procedures over these requirements. They're listed out here, allowable activities, this is where we look at awards and payments to students to ensure that they are allowable. Cash management, we review the requests the college have made to the Department of Education for drawdowns and ensure that they were approved and properly recorded in the general ledger. Eligibility, we ensure that the students are eligible to receive the aid that's awarded and dispersed to them. Matching and earmarking, there's various requirements of matching that the college has to make regarding federal work study and some other things, and we ensure that those requirements are met and recalculated requirements. Reporting, there's various reports that have to be submitted by the university. We ensure that they're accurately and timely reported. And special tests, there's numerous ones here, separate funds, we have to ensure that there's a separate account to maintain the SFA funds. Verification, we review procedures performed and documented, documents obtained by, from the students. Disbursements too, and on behalf of students, we review the calculations, the reporting, the timeliness. Return to Title IV funds, we review the calculations and the timeliness of the refunds or post-withdrawal dispersments. Student status changes, we review the reporting and timeliness of those changes, they have to be submitted in a certain timeframe. Loan repayments, this is where we test student loan repayments, deferments, cancellations. Federal work study agreements, we review those students that have received federal work study, make sure they have a signed agreement, look at their timesheets. Borrow data, data transmission and reconciliation, we review the reconciliations and make sure they're properly prepared and reviewed. Written arrangements with other institutions, this isn't material to the university, but we do look and speak to all the colleges and obtain any agreements, if there are any. And denying students access to lenders, we review the lending policies on CUNY's website and ensure that they're in compliance with this requirement. Slide nine lays out the five findings that we had on the A-133 audit this year. The first one related to timeliness of refunds and post-withdrawal dispersments, which we have had in the past as well. We had two out of 183 samples that we were, that was selected, that were not remitted timely. However, there are no question costs with this finding. Student status confirmation reports, we had three findings out of a sample of 76 students. There are no question costs. This has been a finding in the past, and this year it rose to the level of a significant deficiency, which is disclosed in the A-133 report.
Let us understand why, what is it, three out of 76 represents a?
Well, generally, when there's an error of one or two items, there may have been an isolated reason as to why the internal control failed. Generally, when you hit three, the internal control is deemed to have failed, and that is why you get a significant deficiency.
So if we viewed this as?
Exactly. There was three out of 76, I know there's a, there's one down, number five is three out of 145. This one rose because there were items that were deemed to be systemic, but also it had been a significant deficiency in the past. So you have to look at that as well in terms of the risk associated with it. Yes. Not significant deficiency last year, but it had risen in the, in the prior years. So that's what we have to look at when determining the significance of the internal control that failed.
The next finding, finding three related to financial aid dispersments, we noted one student out of 145 that was not dispersed the proper amount of financial aid. The question cost, clearly immaterial, was $1,700. Student loan repayments, out of a sample of 114 students, we noted two students whose Perkins loans were not reported properly to NSLDS, and again, there are no question costs with this finding. And the last finding was exit counseling, and we noted that three out of 145 student sample did not complete an exit interview, and there's no question cost related to this finding either.
So one student received more than their financial aid by $1,776?
Yes.
Patriotic, that's right.
Patriotic, yeah, I agree. And I could see a $1,000 mistake, an even number, you know. The transposition, something divisible by nine.
Any questions on the A-133 report?
With regard to timeliness of refunds and post-withdrawal dispersment, I don't know exactly what no question cost means, but what does that mean?
It means that there was nothing owed back to the federal government as a result. So essentially, they all got, the refunds were all sent back.
So it's just a question, $2,950 didn't, was, didn't fall within the appropriate time period?
That's correct. What's the time limit? They're 60 days, there's 45 days to submit a refund, and it was just submitted after that fact.
The, the reason it's interesting is, of course, they fine, the fine associated with this is not going to be $2,000, but a couple more zeros on the end of that potentially, so.
Potentially.
Yeah. It was, it's actually good news that there were so few colleges and so few findings, but I suspect those two colleges may have to put aside a few hundred thousand dollars to cover the potential fines that are associated with this. What do we, Baruch was fined, what, $1 million for this, something of this nature? If my memory serves me.
We have made our presidents aware of this issue and that it is a systemic problem, and the Office of the University Registars is working with all the individual registrars at the campuses to ensure that going forward that this is, these refunds are submitted on time.
I could just add, findings like this usually don't lead to a, to a fine. The university has improved its performance in the A-133 area considerably from what it had been several years ago. Findings such as this could lead to a program review, not a program review, but a file review, in which for selective colleges, we may have to look at the full file of students receiving aid and report that to the department, but usually not a fine of the magnitude that you're talking about.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't compliment Barry and his staff for the progress that we've generally made over the years, but as Terry said, this is, you know, the issues are sometimes $30 and $40 that come back with fines or $100,000 and $30,000. It's remarkable costs.
Two questions. Shelley, does the federal government give out ranges of colleges and universities, public and private, on A-133 audits so that you can see where you've been, where you can benchmark yourself on how you're doing with some of, some of these findings and some of these issues?
I mean, how they're, they're progressing with recommendations or how many findings they have versus?
You know, a list of all colleges and universities and how they've done in their A-133 audit?
Well, there is a federal clearinghouse where this is submitted, so it is somewhat public in the, in the sense that you can look into other colleges.
There's no report, though, that the federal government issues. You'd have to look at each report for each institution and compile that.
I got it.
Yeah, we, we actually.
The subject of somebody's future PhD dissertation.
We went, we were having problems, I guess, four or five years ago, we went up and met with the federal government, and we asked, you know, who's doing this really well so we can learn from it?
Right, exactly.
There was no response.
I would hope that we would not give a PhD for that kind of exercise.
And just to give you a sense compared to some of my other clients, the first two findings are very common amongst other colleges and universities because it deals with a lot of communication between various departments at a college, so because communication needs to be happening, the timeliness of refunds and the timeliness of sending student status confirmations can often be missed. So in that sense, it's, it's a common finding.
I would tell you, Baruch, I mean, this is, there are places in the, in the halls where you've got to turn in your e-Roster, you've got to certify this stuff. We take this very, very seriously because of the unfortunate experience we had with a couple of defects.
One of the, one of the issues, Professor Loto, is most colleges are judged college by college. We made a decision, the way we do our financial aid, we're judged as the university. So it's much easier if it's college by college to have a low number, to have a one to zero, but it's much better for our students, so as, because our students are so mobile, because we're so geographically close, our students are well-served by us. Your financial aid is certified in one place, you're certified as being part of the university.
At Baruch, could use that as an example, because it's part of my second question, are there compliance officers within the business areas of the colleges or the legal area, just?
Every college has been asked to identify a compliance person for the A-133 audits they're met with. In addition, we explain to the president that they are ultimately the compliance officer, and, and again, we don't anticipate fines for this kind of an audit, but should we ever have fines, they're college fines, not yours.
Thank you. Any further questions? Comments?
Okay, thank you.
Bring up an issue?
Oh, the issue of the, yeah.
Prior to the, prior to the beginning of the meeting, Professor Martel brought up an issue of the audits themselves and the need, from a good governance point of view, to have an opportunity for the trustees to meet with the auditors separate, you know, in executive session, sometimes with the chancellor, sometimes without the chancellor, so from a reporting point of view. One of the things we'd like to look into is to see, you know, an expansion of the responsibilities of either the audit committee or the Subcommittee on Audit, so that looking at what, you know, on how reporting lines work, so that there's, bring it more up to what current good corporate governance rules are.
Usually, in a corporate governance, that would be a very common practice, to meet with the auditors alone without management.
If I may, the relatively new, absolutely, absolutely not relatively new to the audit committee, I've had conversations, brief conversations with Professor Martel and others, and it seems to me that a enhanced role of the audit committee could include better participation in the life cycle of the audit, starting with the engagement, starting with the defining of terms of the engagement, preliminary findings, problems during the audit, and the rest. So my, my certain, forgive me, I have an allergy issues here. My clear, my clear preference would be, if it's acceptable to the committee, is that the audit committee be more actively engaged during those, we define them first and be actively engaged at those lifecycle, important lifecycle points of the audit, and I certainly am prepared to spend the time necessary to do that.
I would agree. I mean, I think it's just, A, it's good governance, and B, it's appropriate review and due diligence on the part of the trustees.
And management would underscore the appropriate assessment. Are there any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, am I understanding there is an audit engagement letter being worked on, is that?
I'm sorry?
Is that a fact? There's an audit engagement letter being worked on?
Yes, there is.
It was acceptable, I'd like to start with that when the time is proper.
Fine.
If it's acceptable, I'd like to start with that when the time is-
I think you're getting your allergies. I wondered what was going on. Are there any more questions, comments, whatever? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I may, I'd like to make note that Vice Senators Shaw and Seth Yenshaw have continued the pattern of our Budget Advisory Committee meetings with the University of Franklin Senate. We'd like to thank them in this forum for doing so. It's an important vehicle for consultation and exchange of information, and we thank them for continuing, and we look forward to it being a, continuing as a permanent feature.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Thank you.